will come out.
And there everyone's being really quiet or without them. There you go.
I'll to order the committee of the whole meeting at five fifty nine. We're having some technical difficulties, so apologize to the delay. Um, I think for the sake of time, we're gonna skip good at the order and review of the regular meeting agenda because we're not quite sure if the council meeting will be able to happen tonight. Director Thomas and Mason, would you mind just trying to mute just in case that's the echo issue? Okay, thank you. That helps.
Thank you.
Oh, it is so little. Okay, well, every little bit helps sometimes. Okay. So at this point, uh, we're gonna ask all members of the public, um, and I guess staff who have not been instructed to stay, um, to leave the room as we meet in executive session pursuant to R C W forty two dot thirty dot one ten to discuss I T security risks. We expect the executive session to be forty five minutes in duration. It is now six o'clock, so we would be back at six forty five. And if there's any sessions, um, James will make the announcement. Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome to the Duval City Council Regular Meeting on November fifteenth. Um, I will now call this meeting to order at seven oh eight. And could you all please rise for the five. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. For our mission on your own, and to the peaceful, moving to the end. Thank you. Um, Ms. James, would you call the roll piece?
Um, your overlander. Ron Isitson.
President.
Rick Schaefer.
Here.
Amy McHenry.
Here.
Ron Mercer.
Here.
And for Naflin, here. Corey Lovett.
Here.
And Mike Supple.
Here.
Hey, we have a quorum. Thank you. All right. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? I have a couple. You wanna go ahead? Yes, um, we have one correction to the agenda. The agenda that was posted, um, uh, for the public had incorrect, um, ordinance numbers on them. So we will be making a correction to the numbers on the agenda and asking to adopt a revised agenda. And, uh, our clerk, can you pull up the revised agenda so we can, uh, see the, the changes that were made in the numbering? If we pass any of them tonight, won't we need to use the new numbers? I'm assuming then. We will need to use the new numbers.
Gee, oh, I mean. So the numbers that are going to be revised are these ones that have the asterisks here. And with this agenda bill numbers, um, the agenda bill numbers that we have public were already in use. So they were just updated revised agenda bill number. And that would be the only change.
Which ones?
Oh, actually, all of them, right? And we'll scroll back down a little bit. Yes, please. Thank you. So it's just.
But basically, it would be, um, they're all on order, yeah.
I mean, it's both now that we're in, so the agenda bill numbers are all.
Agenda bill, yes.
Okay. And then, um, we're going to also move the kindness month proclamation to the four comments from the audience. And I know we don't need to, um, amend the agenda, but just to give everyone a heads up that we'll also be going into executive session after that proclamation to continue. Um, okay, so with those amendments, um, is there a motion to approve this evening's, um, agenda as amended?
So.
Oh, sorry, councilman. Um, so it's been moved. Do you have a question?
I did. I, if I had a question about something on the consent agenda, I'm not sure. Do I have to take it off the consent agenda? Is this when it happens?
Or could I just ask the question at the beginning? You would wanna, well, no, you would wanna pull it off. Consent agenda.
Yeah.
Because normally go to the lawyer. Because then we would discuss it during the, yeah, it's a limited discussion.
Okay, it's a requirement that item six, the remodel.
Item six.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're. We have a motion on the table. Um, can I ask? Oh, go ahead.
I mean, it was never seconded, so.
Okay, so we can just let it die?
Yeah.
Okay, so the new, um, change would be taking item six off the consent agenda and adding it to, is that new business or old business? Or unfinished business?
It would be new business.
New business, okay. Um, is, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended tonight? Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Okay, motion passes. So with that now, we will move on to, um, our kindness month proclamation. And let's see, and I know that we have some guests that just wanted to say a few words. Um, so I could go ahead and read the proclamation and then give them a few moments. Is that sound good? So proclamation for kindness month of two thousand twenty-two, whereas the city of Duval honors those no matter how young or old that make a positive difference in our community and our world. And whereas the empower youth networks use suicide prevention program, which includes the be kind S V campaign, makes our schools, communities and states stronger by facilitating meaningful change through simple acts of kindness. And whereas any day, week or month is a good time to remind all of us of the need to remember that compassion, empathy, humility and respect are essential ingredients in the creation and maintenance of a kind and civilized society. And whereas kindness is a fundamental part of the human condition, which bridges the, the divides of race, religion, politics and gender. And whereas by knowing, understanding and using our power of kindness, we have the ability to send out a positive ripple that may travel throughout the valley of beyond. And whereas fostering acts of kindness within our community, we help our citizens develop a thoughtful foundation and perspective within themselves and those around them. And whereas the simple, through simple acts of kindness, we can promote healthy behaviors and positive dynamics within our community. And whereas we seek to cultivate caring kindness and compassion within our community. Now therefore, Amy O'Carland or mayor of the city of Duval, Washington does proclaim November twenty twenty-two as kindness month in the city of Duval. Do we have a couple guests that wanted to come up and speak about it? Or do you just want the photo op? Did you wanna say a few words? Sure. You owe the podium, sorry about that. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Do you wanna introduce yourselves and what, uh, organization you're from?
So my name is Sarah. I'm the prevention coordinator, review suicide prevention coordinator for the empower youth network. And I'm Maya, and I do the youth engagement working for empower youth. So we just wanna say thank you for your leadership and joining us, proclaiming kindness month. Um, for this November in the Snohomie Valley. And the empower youth network is grateful for the support of the community and with this effort. Um, in addition to the city of Duval, the following entities and communities have joined together with us in the proclamation of November is kindness month, such as the Snohomie, the Snohomie India Tribe, the cities of North Bend, Carnation Snohomie, the town of Fall City, and both of Riverview and Snohomie Valley School Districts. And the empower youth network is hosting a series of activities in November in celebration of kindness month to promote caring kindness and compassion within our community. Um, E Y N's youth suicide prevention program, which includes the be kind S V campaign, makes our schools and communities and states stronger by facilitating meaningful change through simple acts of kindness. And throughout kindness month, we have a few different activities, um, that are detailed on the empower youth network's webpage. And some of those include nominating kindness ambassadors, in which we will recognize those on our social media awareness and through our, um, different outlets that we do have. We also have a business pledge, which encourages businesses to make, um, kindness business as usual. I'm sure they'll be recognized through a placard and a window clean that they will proudly display, that they are making that within their community, within their work. And then lastly, we are gonna host a free special show of the movie Wonder at the North Bend Theater on November twenty seventh. Um, doors are open at eleven thirty. And that's just a fun way for us to give back to the community, recognize kindness. And we'll be offering free popcorn and soda. And it is a P G movie, so it's open to all families and features. And as well, I've got an event we recognize in kindness month. So thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. Did you want us to all stand up with you and get?
Yeah, sure. Come on, everybody. Don't be shy on our team loves.
It gets a little crowded in here, but.
Well, we're being here too.
Yeah. There we go. It gets, it's in here. We're okay.
Okay, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Nice, good.
Have a good night. Of course, you're welcome to stay and hang out. Yeah. That is. All right, so let's see now, um, at this point now, yeah, you're right. We're going to go into executive session, um, pursuant to R C W forty two dot thirty dot one ten to discuss I T security risks. We expect the executive session to maybe be twenty minutes, I think, would be a safe bet. I think that would be safe to start. Um, and we'll come out, um, if any time extensions are required, um, our clerk will make the announcement. So seven eighteen now for the public. Staff who do not need to be in with us, uh, leave the room as we meet in that executive session. Okay, we're back, um, and we're moving on to comments from the audience. Any members of the public who would like to speak, um, either raise your hand icon. Um, if you're agreeing this virtual, I don't think any of them is here. Um, and individuals can speak for three minutes. If you're representing an organization, you can speak for five. Any comments related to public hearings we have scheduled, um, should be provided at that time on the agenda. And then, do we have any attendees or?
Oh, we, we do have one.
Okay.
No handout.
No handout. Okay. Just wait one more second, just in case. Okay, and then do we have any, um, comments submitted?
No, we did not.
No, okay. All right, so with that, we already, we'll go ahead and move on then, as long as nobody raised their hand. We already did our kindness presentation, um, and we did the consent agenda. Okay, so we're skipping the mayor's report. Uh, she is not here. And so next up then would be, uh, Duval Police Department report, but she could. Finally.
Amy, did, did we? Or not vote? Yeah.
Yes, we did that before. We made additions and corrections to the agenda, and then we pulled the one item off and sent a part of all of that. And we voted on that already.
We did. Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Go ahead.
Good evening, mayor, council, all mayors. Mayor Proton. Members of council, city staff, members of committee, the president. I'm Chief Tabak of the Duval Police Department. I'll be providing you with a police staff report for October twenty twenty-two. Um, I would like to start with a hiring update. Uh, not over, uh, see, on November second, we extended an offer to the lateral candidate from Hawaii. He accepted that offer and he set to start, uh, work on January first, so we're very excited about that. He does need time to transfer from Hawaii, so that's why the January first started base. Um, we are currently, we currently have one lateral candidate and an additional entry level candidate who are in the background. And once we have those two people through, hopefully they're successful. That'll bring us up to full staffing level with the patrol, but we will still have that open sergeant position. Uh, we plan to still hire within for that sergeant position in January, which will open up another patrol position. We've already started recruiting that position. Um, tonight you'll see a I O A for mental health services with the revenue police department. I'm very excited about this. It's been a year in the making, so, um, hoping to, uh, bring that forward for your consideration later this evening. Recently, we were informed that our engine legal services were no longer gonna be able to provide service to the city of Duval. And we're in the process of securing a new service at this time, and we hope to have now I O A for your review next month.
What was that for?
Uh, intelligent legal, so our public defender, basically. Um, month of October responded to three hundred and thirty calls for service. This is an increase from twenty twenty-one when we responded to two hundred and thirty-six. That increase is due to a lot of new stopping, a lot of train bills involved and traffic stops and contacting citizens. So that's the increase in call volume that you're seeing there. Uh, community outreach update in October, the police department wore pink badges in support of breast cancer awareness. In the book, in November, some of our officers are participating in the Movember to bring awareness to men's health. As you can tell. A lot of care this evening. Um, we are holding a fundraiser for the Seattle Cancer Care Alliance and trying to reach our goal of two thousand dollars. Currently, today, we've only raised four hundred and fifty-seven, but we have until December first to raise the remaining forty. Hopefully we get there. Uh, October thirty first, the officers and staff participated in Main Street Trick or Treat. This was an amazing community event. Um, Mayor Proton was out there helping us with the candy handout. Uh, we're excited that this is finally back in place after years of being without. It's one of our, you know, events that we look forward to each year. And we're looking forward to seeing all of you at the tree lighting, which is gonna be on December second, which is our next major event. Uh, December first, we'll be hosting a coffee with the cop, team of the teacher event. This is our first event since twenty nineteen with Coffee with Cop. Um, we'll be holding this at Rustic Cabin from three to four, so come on down and bring a question and we'll enjoy a cup of coffee together. Uh, December third, we'll be participating in the hometown, um, team harvest as stateway Duval in support of Snohomie Valley's food bank. Um, and with our food drive, we hope to see you all there. And I've added the police stats for October twenty twenty-two and a minute from the October twenty fifth pack, uh, public safety meeting tier packets for your convenience of review. Are there any questions?
Any questions for the chief?
Sounds good.
All right, thank you very much. All right, um, are there any council committee reports tonight? Uh, go ahead, Tom, some member Naflin?
Yes, we had a finance and administration committee meeting on November third. It was a pretty quick meeting. We looked over the October sales tax report, which showed construction is flat, which is kind of what the trend we've been seeing. Retail trade just for the, so this represents the month of August, the October sales tax. So for the month of August this year compared to August of the last year, retail trade was up thirteen point eight percent. Um, food service was up seven point five percent. Um, one of the other big increases over the year, um, is landscaping, which falls under kind of an odd category called admin and sort of waste management and renewal services. But it's up thirty-four point six percent. So while it's not called construction sales tax, it really is primarily that's due to, um, landscaping related to the big developments. So we'll be keeping an eye on that because as they reach final clap, um, you know, we might see less of that. So just to keep an eye on it. And then we discussed our investment program. Um, there, we have more funds available to invest and, uh, the city is below their target of fifty percent being invested, um, more in bonds. And so there were some purchases proposed by our finance director and she's moving forward with those. So that's about it.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Okay, any other council committee reports tonight? All right, then we'll move on. Uh, do any council members wish to speak tonight or have a report of their own? Don't see any. Um, I would just say we had a, um, a council chat budget edition. I can't remember the date. I don't know on the top of my head, but, um, council member Schaefer and Naflin and our city administrator and Director Mason, uh, stopped by at Starbucks and didn't have any residents stop by and ask us questions, but it was a good chance to visit and chat with each other. And it's always good to have that opportunity for the public to come through. Um, I have to look at my calendar. We have another one coming up. I think maybe we'll try and get that one posted on Facebook. I know it went into utilibilizing, but wouldn't hurt to get one more avenue. I know we don't have anyone really assigned to do that, but I can send you the info again. Okay. All right. So now on to city administrator McNabb's report.
Uh, so I will be very quick because we have lots of business. Um, next slide is the agenda and it'll be the same agenda every time. Um, and you can move on to the next one. So, um, community committee and commissions updates. So, um, just a couple of meetings that are coming up, the joint planning commission and city council workshop is tomorrow in the visitor center on the Snohomie Valley Housing Needs Assessment. Uh, you'll be seeing this next week or, uh, November twenty ninth, rather, not the week of Thanksgiving. Um, the last week in November, posting a special session of the COW. They'll focus exclusively on budget related items. So if there are still questions or requests for discussions, uh, please let me know so we can make sure that we're prepared. Um, for that, the meeting of the COW tonight that dealt with the staff position request will move to that special session so we can have that conversation around the positions. But any other topic that is budget related, um, please let us know and we can prepare to have those discussions. Um, a question about interest in moving the December twentieth council meeting to December thirteenth. That would put us three back to back Tuesdays in a row. Also reset time on the weekend, uh, or the week of the Christmas holiday. So, uh, please let us know and we can, uh, work with our input city clerk to.
Do you want us to, I mean, you just want us to email you and let you know if that's interesting to us?
Might, might be worth having a conversation here so we can, uh, move forward, but we still have time. So we can discuss it in the comments. So maybe, or on the twenty ninth.
Yeah.
Um, and then just, uh, uh, post for interest, the Association of Washington Cities, city action days are planned for February fifteenth and sixteenth, twenty twenty-three in Olympia, which is, uh, an opportunity for, uh, council members and mayors and other electeds to, uh, interact and, uh, discuss issues with legislators down in Olympia. And next slide, so this is very small. I will tell you what is in it. So first, a big thank you to our interim city clerk, Cherry James, who's here and who's helped us all night, um, in very difficult. So big thank you. Um, we are interviewing for the city clerk position the week of November twenty eighth, um, to, uh, make a permanent placement in the state clerk position. Um, in public works, we have the wastewater treatment, um, bid advertisement going out. The bid is planned for opening on December fourteenth at two P M with a prebid walk for it on November twenty ninth. Um, lots of updates in community development, so, uh, community development applied for a grant to support the parks, trails and open space plan update, which would be, um, very helpful to get us. It's gonna be, you know, a project with a fairly big cost associated with it. Um, there are some recruitment efforts in community development. They're going to begin a third recruitment for their senior planner next week. Um, backup plan, if, uh, that it is, if we have a hard time getting that, then, uh, try to recruit for an associate planner. Um, we are updating the planning manager position for recruitment and that should pose, uh, following the adoption of the biennial budget. And then community development permit highlights, um, uh, quite a few permits. And this is in the council packet. If you wanna take a look and review it, um, highlights that right now, Open Gov pending permits to date are two hundred and three. The October permits that were issued through Open Gov, um, is forty-five for October year to date, a hundred and twenty-two. So, um, that functionality seems to be working. There are some hiccups with Open Gov that we're, you know, find every time we try to run either payroll or utility billing cycle through it, but, um, it is operational functioning and we're doing a lot of business through it. Um, in October, we had a hundred and seventy inspections and year to date, two thousand and forty-three inspections. And then in terms of city hall news, um, chief already spoke, the light up Duval event is, uh, December second at six P M. And just a couple of things, kind of talking about what I'm focusing on at the end of the year, in addition to the things that we heard tonight. Um, really focus on enhancing our recruitment strategies, um, by using tools, augmenting LinkedIn and some other recruiting methods that we haven't spent a lot of time on, um, but could stand to use more focus and hopefully will, um, uh, bring more folks into the city of Duval or seeking city employment. And then, um, the other thing that we want, I wanted to bring up because it will be work that I'll be bringing, um, in the next month or so, is developing some codes, uh, code of conduct standards for how citizens behave in our buildings. We've had a couple of interactions with, um, some of our community members that, um, resulted in some offensive and, um, and frightening behavior. And so, um, developing some standards for what our expectations are when people walk through our door and how they treat our city staff. We don't have standards right now or a policy really in place on that. We have internal, uh, harassment and bullying policies, but we don't really have a policy that we would post prominently for. Hey, this is what we expect when folks enter our workplaces.
So, yeah, I'm all, I'm all in favor of having a code of conduct, but I'm curious, how do you expect that to work? Because an Irish citizen typically not paused to read that or comprehend that type of, type of thing. I'm here.
Right here. So, um, so I actually have quite a bit of experience of this coming from the library. So we had, um, so as I'm sure you all were, lots of folks entered the, the door of the library in all sorts of states of good health and not good health. And so, um, you know, it's kind of a warn, instruct, ban, trust. It's a continuum of, uh, putting people on notice about what you expect with, uh, violations of those warnings having progressively more significant consequences. Now, we're in a public organization, citizens have a right to speak their mind about things that they're dissatisfied with. That doesn't mean that we're without recourse to expect not, you know, offensive behavior to not happen. Um, so there's, it, it, it tends to be a continuum and a good, uh, code of conduct policy has to be on a continuum when you're dealing with the public. So it tends to start with, um, prominently displayed warning, second warning, banning, then criminal trespass.
Okay, good, good. Thank you.
With a quick question, Brian. Um, so for the light up Duval, and we have a lot of new people who might not have known, but usually council members can go down. I don't know if they're being asked to participate. I'm looking at you, sorry, because I know. So are we gonna get an email for what to expect or what you need from us?
Working with the mayor like I do, and typically she invites all council members to come down and, um, and withstand a bike tree, um, and that should take place sometime about six fifteen on December second. So you're all invited.
Families too.
And we'll be a procession down Main Street before we actually go down to Depot Park to bike the tree.
Great. Was that any more questions? Okay, thank you. Um, so now we're going to have our only public hearing tonight. Um, on our preliminary operating and capital budget for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Um, we may have a staff report, I'm not sure, and then take public comments. So the public hearing for this matter is now open at eight thirty-four. And Director Mason, did you have a report or a recap? I know you, go ahead. So, um, good evening, everyone. Dana Mason, Finance Director. So I do have a very abbreviated presentation of the one that we showed at the last meeting. So it's just a summary. I'll just run through that real quick and, um, see if there's any questions. Okay, so the agenda is just a quick expenditures overview, a revenue overview, a fund balance overview, and then our budget timeline. And so total expenditure budget for twenty twenty-three is just under thirty-two point three million. And then expenditures for twenty twenty-four are just over forty-five, uh, forty point five million for a biennial total of seventy-two point eight million. And this slide just kind of tells, shows you how the expenditures are, are broken out for the biennium. Capital expenditures make up the largest category, about two.
about twenty-nine point five million or thirty-four percent of biennial budget. Salaries and benefits are the second largest category at about seventeen million or twenty-three percent combined. Um, the third highest category then is professional services at twenty-three percent and about six, sixteen point four million. And then transfers out, everyone's favorite is about ten point mil- ten point four million at fourteen percent. And then the last two smaller categories are supplies and our debt services. And for revenues, this is the category that's changed since last presentation. So um, the timeframe frame of the engineering news record construction cost index was changed from the two-year average of January through December to the two-year average of November through October, which is um, sixty, is six point twenty-one percent for twenty twenty-three, which is slightly up from the previous estimate of six point two, zero two percent. And then the four point seven six estimated, we estimate we used for twenty twenty-four remains unchanged. So this increased revenue estimates just a little bit for what traffic and park impact fees and then water sewer, storm drainage, uh, general facility charges. And those small amounts are in the agenda bell. And then here's just our expenditures or sorry, our revenues by category. So the twenty twenty-three budget includes an estimated thirty-one point two million in revenues. And then there's also al- almost thirty-nine point nine million in twenty twenty-four revenues for just under seventy-one point one million for the biennium. And we have this lovely little pie chart. Um, the largest source of estimated revenue is charges for services, and that includes um, revenue from utilities and impact fees. Makes up about twenty-seven point six million or thirty-nine percent of the budget. Revenues from taxes is estimated at fourteen million for the budget or twenty-one percent of the budget. Um, miscellaneous revenues, which includes revenues from general facility charges, makes up about ten point four million of the budget or fifteen percent. And then other financing sources for transfers in makes up ten point four million or fourteen percent of the budget, just mirror, mirrors the transfers out. And then the remaining categories are intergovernmental revenues, which is primarily grants, licenses and permits, and then fines and penalties. And then for fund balance, um, the estimated beginning fund balance for the biennium is about thirty-three point nine million. And then the estimated ending fund balance for the biennium, for this is for all funds is approximately thirty-two point one million, one, um, one point eight million less than the beginning fund balance. And then of course, I, I've just highlighted um, up in the corner in yellow. So that's the general fund. The contingency fund is kind of considered part of the general fund a- as well as the strategic fund. And then the building and permitting fund that was pulled out of the general fund um, the last biennium or the, the current biennium that we're in. Um, and then the budget timeline, we're right here in November fifteenth. So this is our public hearing number two. Um, tonight we need to adopt property tax. And then there will be as property tax levy, uh, there'll be a special session, a budget and fee uh, scheduled session on the twenty-ninth of November. Um, on the tw- sixth of December, there'll be the end of biennial budget amendment discussion at the Council of the Whole. And then uh, uh, it's possible that on the sixth of December, the twenty twenty-three biennial budget and B schedule will be adopted. Um, and then also we'll talk more about the end of the uh, biennial budget adoption or but end of biennial budget um, amendments. And it's possible that could be adopted at this meeting as well. Um, if it's not, we have a meeting either on December thirteenth or December twentieth to adopt um, whatever needs to get done. And that is the end of the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Um, let's see, any members of the public who wish to speak concerning this topic can press the raise your hand icon if you're virtual. It's, there's nobody here, right? Um, and individuals that have three minutes to speak or representatives of organizations would have five minutes to speak. Do we have anyone online? We do not. Okay. And was there any written testimony provided? No, there was none. Okay. So with that, um, staff, Director Mason, you don't have any closing comments, I'm assuming?
I, I do not.
Okay, so I will now close the public hearing at eight forty-one. All right, moving on to unfinished business. Um, our first item is A B twenty-two dash one oh two preliminary biennial operating and capital budget for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four with Director Mason.
So um, I, I guess at this point, we just saw the very abbreviated summary of the above it budget presentation. Um, staff at this point, we just like to know if council has any changes they would like to see made before the next, the next discussion of the budget. Is there anything glaring or anything that needs to be discussed?
So I think I would throw out my own um, proposition at this point, which would be, given the time of tonight and what we still have left on our agenda, that perhaps we started up at the twenty-ninth meeting and get into it then, cause I just, on our list of questions and discussion items, I just don't know what we could accomplish tonight, given all the other stuff we still have to go through. Um, is everyone okay with that? And then if we run out of time on the twenty-ninth, we can schedule another meeting. We, like, we can schedule a special meeting. We've got that extra option in December. I mean, yeah, it'd be great if we had a meeting on the thirteenth and not the twentieth and we were done, but if we really need to, we can. Um, so, uh, go ahead.
And one quick question, that, sorry, it was obvious to everybody else, but are we in the black or are we in the red for the biennial? I didn't, I mean, your revenue versus expenditures, it just wasn't clear to me. Which one is it? I'm assuming we're black, but.
Uh, well, it depends on the fund. So the general fund, we are using ending fund balance to help cover some of the expenses, the budgeted expenses.
Overall, black or red?
Uh, well, overall, that would be the red, but yeah. By one point eight million. So we're using one point eight million dollars um, ups. Our, our ending fund balance will be one point mil- eight million dollars less than our beginning fund balance. But we, we all a- also are having a lot of capital expenditures or capital projects. And we are spending down our American Rescue planning funds, which is almost two million dollars.
But John, it, so depending what you mean by black or red, we're
We're not in debt.
We're not in debt. We, we will have less total funds by what we said, one point eight million, Dan.
Yes, yes.
Well, at the end of the twenty, you know, projected at the end of twenty twenty-four. Uh, but that's, we're still above water and uh, and very much in the black.
Right. We, we are just, our revenues are a little bit less than our expenditures, um, especially in the general fund.
Any other questions or do we wanna? Move on? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to A B twenty-two dash one oh three. Ordinance adopting ad warrant, property tax levy rate for twenty twenty-three with Director Mason.
Hello again. Go ahead and share me screen. So this is the same slideshow that I presented at the last meeting. Um, but it's been updated just a little bit. First, we'll just talk about where your property taxes go. Um, it's an overview of the levy lift correction. Um, property tax calculations for the uncorrected amount and the corrected amount. And then the levy rate and then a city property tax example, and then some time for discussion and hopefully, um, hopefully a decision. So where do your talk, uh, property taxes go? In uh, twenty twenty-two, homeowner in Duval paid approximately ten dollars and four cents uh, per a one thousand dollars of assessed value. That was down from eleven point, or eleven dollars and ten cents in twenty twenty-one. And fifty-one percent of property is, or fifty-one point eight was actually approved by voters. You can see that the city of Duval gets um, eleven point five percent of the property tax as it's assessed on its residence. So for the levy lift correction, um, in two thousand and sixteen, voters approved a nine-year levy lift for Big Rock Ballpark Fund debt. Full-time schools, resource officer and I T improvements. The levy lid lift expires in twenty twenty-five. In April of twenty twenty-two, King County reported that the levy lift amount had been miscalculated. And this, it can re-levy the difference between the allowable and the certified property tax levy for the last three years. That was about forty-seven, almost forty-eight thousand dollars. In August, uh, council chose not to re-levy the amount available for the last three years. And, uh, but the preliminary property tax worksheet from the county has, so, so it does not have the amount that the council said they didn't want to re-levy, but it does have the corrected amount. I'm an additional, it's about sixty-two thousand dollars that would be restricted and used for I T improvements. But here's the two uh, levy calculations. You, in twenty twenty-three corrected is the one with, with, that was corrected by that county, county. And um, so it's just the prior levy lid, the prior levy, prior year limit factor levy um, that you can see in this first line. I'm gonna use the pointer. This first line, you can see that this is where the big difference is. And then you multiply that by one percent and you get your levy um, without constructions and refunds. Um, this is the cities, it's the updated assessed value of new construction. And actually, we just got another one this afternoon, so it's a little bit higher. But that's okay, because we put this extra twenty thousand dollars in, so we don't need to redo the ordinance. Um, but they increase in utility valley, value is unknown, but you multiply the assessed value or divided by one thousand and you come, and then you multiply it by your prior year levy rate, and then you come up with your new construction levy. So this is the additional amount property tax the city is getting from new construction. And then here's our levy with new construction. We've get the re-levy of prior year uh, refunds, our allowable levy, and then we add the additional twenty thousand dollars um, just in case more new construction comes in or um, there's utility value that doesn't get assessed until after the thirtieth of November. So the levy rates, if corrected, um, the levy rate would be ninety-two cents per one thousand or almost ninety-three cents per one thousand dollars of assessed value. And um, without the correction, it would be just over ninety cents for assessed value or one thousand dollars of assessed value. And then this graph just shows the assessed value rate going up as levy rate kind of comes down. And then this is just an example of, of the same city, the same home that we used last year. Um, so it's a, it's almost a three thousand square foot home built in twenty twenty-two um, on eleven thousand, almost twelve thousand square foot, foot parcel. So you can see that um, the increase in assessed value went up significantly from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, thirty point four point four percent. The increase with the, without, with the correction in city levy would be seventy-nine, seventy, seven point nine percent. And without the levy, it would be just over five percent. Um, and then just real quickly, uh, this is, I left a slide in here about bank hit capacity, but for R C W, um, taxi districts are allowed to increase property tax by ma- maximum of one percent per year. If you do not take the one percent, you can bank the difference, but it does compound over time. And then you could, you could levy it all at once. So the process, we had our, our number, our November first uh, property tax hearing and public testimony and uh, some council discussion. And for, for today, we, we do need action because we need to give this uh, the ordinance to the county by the thirtieth of November. Um, the, the decision made at the last meeting on the first, or the discussion was that yes, um, we, the city should allow uh, levy the allowable one percent. Um, discussion and decision needed tonight is um, should the city use the corrected levy as the basis for twenty twenty-three property tax or the uncorrected um, levy? So that is it? Thank you.
Council members wanna, oh, go ahead.
So could you go back to the slide that showed the assessed value for that, that home?
Sure, you got it. Get back here.
The way it looked to me like one way, the rate is an additional thirty-two dollars a year for property tax.
Oh, let me get back to that. Let's see. That may have been it. Um, so yes, it's about twenty nine, twenty-nine dollars more with the corrected amount.
But we're still under the one percent, right, or a point, uh?
So we would take the one percent, and this is with the one percent increase. Um, it would be one thousand thirty-two for this specific house. Um, and this is just the living, the city's portion. And then it would be one thousand three dollars without the correction. So yes, the specific property owner would be paying about twenty-nine dollars more per year.
And the next slide?
Pardon me?
Could you go to the next slide, please?
Yeah.
So, but we're not, we're not increasing property tax by a full one percent, right?
So the last, at the last council meeting, um, it, we thought that council had said, yes, we would be increasing property tax by the one percent. It was just the um, just whether we would use uncorrected levy or the corrected levy as the basis.
Any other council discussion? Councilor Isaacson?
So we use a corrected vice one corrected. What does that mean? It'll be starting our next year, that's our baseline when we levy the next tax, right, concern? And um, having, having these liberty discussions before, that example is just an example of one home that had an increased value of a large increase. Homes have more and more increased, pay more and more taxes. Homes have less increased, pay less and less. And at some point with the zero, so very convoluted confusion, confusing subject. Property taxes is a common, it's a shame that we've made this, I mean, our government in general. I just wanna make sure if we vote, if I was to vote to approve this, what I'm saying is, next year, we're starting our baseline at a higher levy, another one percent. That only looks like one percent next year of nine dollars or nineteen dollars, wherever, but we're continuing to move that levy brand further and further up on our citizens.
Yes.
Good, Director Mason, did you have other comment?
Oh, uh, so I was saying, I'm not, I'm so, so sorry, the fan keeps coming on here, so it's hard for me to hear. But yes, this is the, the one percent. It's not a lot. Uh, it's twenty-one thousand dollars with the corrected version. And then just, I mean, it's like six hundred dollars less, six hundred and forty dollars less with the uncorrected version. For this, we, the city really doesn't get a lot of money from the one percent increase. But i- if the city doesn't, um, if, if, if we don't increase by the one percent every year, we have the, the ability to bank it. And then it kind of compounds. So, so next year, it would be two point one percent that we could increase. And, and, and sometimes cities do say, okay, I, you need to go for, you need to go and, and use that bank capacity. So you could, you could actually put on the property tax. Um, you could do a, a, use your bank capacity and do a five percent uh, property tax increase. So doing it one percent at a time is a little bit easier on the property owner than banking it and, and and levying a higher amount all at once.
Councilor Mercer and then Naflin?
Yeah, I, I sort of wanted to, you know, we had sort of two questions that Director Mason put in front of us last time. When was the one percent? I think for the council members here, there was some consensus that we were moving for, I think the area that we were gonna revisit tonight, and I went and did some research based on some comments Director, not Director, uh, Councilmember Naflin had made, and I was familiar with the, the August twenty-two discussion, but you know, back in August, we made a decision to, to not uh, re-levy the, the base amount. I think the, the, the point of contention, or, or at least the conversation amongst the council was really how the referendum was presented. And you know, initially, in How the referendum was presented, and you know, initially in two thousand and sixteen, how it was interpreted. And we had a lot of that discussion in August when we made the decision not to re levy. At at that point, um, you know, I was okay with the decision, I I. The numbers were relatively small, but I was was okay with the consensus of of not re levying at at time, but there was some. At least my perspective is when we came back around to this, for not even the second bite of the apple, but revisiting. We wouldn't move forward and I think for me, particularly based on tonight's I T conversation that that these are targeted on I T. That twenty-nine dollars in and of itself doesn't seem like a lot, but it's another sixty-one thousand. Uh, allocated to I T uh specifically, because I think the school resource officer piece of the dress. And I did go back and look at, you know, for me, it was what was presented on the ballot versus what was on the city website. And there were two different things there, I mean, you could read the city website a little bit in terms of. Uh, I think it, the the block of it does seem like some fixed amounts, although what will levy cost is a percentage, so I think. But the ballot language to me was not that confusing, it was pretty straightforward that it was going to increase every time. That it was up to, you know, this amount added to the base levy, which would have increased to a maximum levy. And then uh, I'm sure no one knew that back and reads R C W eighty-four fifty-five, but again, the language is in there if you did read it in terms of how it's assessed every time. For me, it was fairly clear cut in terms of ultimately, at the end of the day, it's not really what's on the city's website, it's what's on the ballot measure, the economy fell in the circle. Um, and while no one likes additional taxes, I think there was a lot of uncertainty in terms of what the. Uh, some of the upcoming I T investments are gonna, you know, actually cost the city, I would feel more comfortable allocating those funds while they're available and it would be. Uh, to to go forward, so I think we're gonna have a broader conversation, but again, for me, that that was really the point of. Conversation was um. Did we do our due diligence in terms of acknowledging that the language at the time wasn't wasn't clear? We had a formal public discussion amongst the council when we decided not to re levy. The past amounts and and in that conversation, I think there was an expectation set to going forward. Um, you know, that we would re baseline and sort of report, so I just wanted, from my perspective, I'm I'm comfortable. Uh, moving forward in particular, in light of of, you know, some of the the investments when you're looking forward to going to the buy-in cycle to to. To uh essentially do that reset and 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 essentially take advantage of the levy that's available for this I T investment, so. With the correct, yes.
Yeah, I, this has been a real struggle for for me, because the question is that do we need the money, which clearly we could use the money to create things. The question is an ethical question for me personally. And Councilmember Isaacson brought something up that is really critical, um, property taxes are extremely confusing. I mean. You look online and the misconception people have about how property taxes were conversations, even among elected officials. People, it it's very complicated to understand, so. Yes. When you read the exact language here on the ballot. You can interpret it to say, yes, it would grow or maybe it'd be this, but most taxpayers, voters. Assume that when the government puts out marketing materials and when. The city administrator responds to emails from citizens about what's going to happen with the levy. That that would be reliable information, so whether or not you can understand the ballot measure very well. You've maybe looked on the website, you, there's wires that were mailed, you went to, you know, open houses about the levy. Maybe you sent an email to the city administrator to get it cleared up. You expect that that information is going to be accurate. And when there is a pattern of that information painting a completely different picture than the technical. You know, confusing details that most people don't understand on the ballot measure. Um, I think we have an ethical duty to stand by with. What was explained to the public, what the public thought they were voting on. And so I think that's where we're in this dilemma, is that King County looks at that and they're like, well, technically. You know, you could have done it this way and you can get more money. Um, like here, I'll I'll give you a a quick little. Um, snippet of an email that our, at the time, finance director, not our, not Director Mason, but she corresponded with. King County Assessor's Office who works, you know, calculates this and she says to her. Um, I was under the impression that the amount was designated, was designed, excuse me, to be a fixed dollar amount that does not change. The piece that changes as more new construction becomes part of the city's evolved asset value is that the levy rate would decrease. To always make it some to three hundred and thirty-nine thousand. So here we are, even our finance director, who's explaining things to the public, who has to vote on this thing. Thinks that it's going to stay at three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars a year perpetually for the nine-year term, which is what the marketing material said. Which is also what the city administrator had described to a constituent who had um inquired, the constituent at the time she was voting. Asked, will the levy decrease as more houses are built and dewfall grows? Here's what city administrator's answer, yes, the council specifically structured the levy. So that as new construction and value is added to the city, the tax burden on existing rate pairs decreases. So this is, this is what's going on at the time, that's what's happening. And so already, we discovered at the, you know, about four years ago. That the levy was growing by the one percent in new construction. Now, in general, that only hits existing taxpayers by one percent a year and, you know, it is what it is. So it's already grown from three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars to four hundred and fifty-two. Which I already feel kind of yucky about, right, we told them it was going to be three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars a year and as more people came in. My proportion would go down, so I should be getting reduced amounts each year, the levy live with portion. So now it's already at four hundred and fifty-two thousand, which is way higher than three hundred and thirty-nine, they think they were gonna collect every year for nine years. So now we're saying, because of this technicality of the way it was written, that no one understood clearly. The assessors didn't understand it when they first started it. And then when they were still trying to clear it out, even our finance director was arguing with. The assessor's office that, no, that's not what we intended and that's not what we did and they got to this debate. Anyway, I have more emails that kind of describe what happened, but now we're proposing, we're going to do this fix. Because of the technicality that you can actually set more, took like five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars a year, starting this year and go up from there. So we promised three hundred and thirty-nine and now we're thinking, let's do five hundred and seventeen thousand a year. I mean, this to me is an ethical issue, it has nothing to do with whether we need the money, I think you made a really important comment at the last discussion. If we need more money, then ask the taxpayers for more money. Do what, if we told the taxpayers we're collecting three hundred and thirty-nine thousand associated with this live lift. That's what we should collect, if we need more money, we ask for more money and the voters can either approve or disprove it, but using. An argument that we need the money, for me, doesn't. Take precedence over just the baseline ethical questionnaire. So I don't know, I put a whole bunch of the background information up in the folder, if anyone wants to look at it, you maybe haven't seen it.
Oh, I added some stuff today.
Yeah.
The the ballot, which was clear in the the explanation and the and the proposition and it never mentions three hundred and ninety-nine.
But the interesting thing about the measure is it even contradicts, the ballot measure even contradicts the um. The resolution that the council passed. So if you look at the council's resolution of authorizing this to go on the ballot, it doesn't match this. So even the council didn't authorize this language. It's just somehow in the translation of the ordinance. And it kind of contradicted itself in the ordinance, I I, maybe you could weigh in on whether you saw there was some contradictory language that did. You know. They both couldn't be true at the same time and anyway.
I'm gonna jump in super quick and then go and then we'll go to Councilmember Schaefer and Councilmember Isaacson, I just want to make sure everyone gets a chance. I, this is not an easy one and I, I also don't want to get kind of put into a corner where like there's only one. I I don't think that's what you're saying, but like I don't want anyone to feel like only one choice is ethical and the other one is not. I get it, yeah, I just wanted to say that, I think, um. You know, for me, I I get it, because I actually corresponded with the city administrator at the time as a citizen and asked some questions. I'm a more generalized, bigger picture thinker too, and I think for me, what it comes down to, because it's so tricky. Um, you know, those emails, those correspondences weren't on the ballot for people to look at, so I really have to go off, I know what. Councilmember Mercer was referencing, which is what was on the ballot at the time, what was the spirit of what was being asked, um. And so for me. I lean more toward, you know, agreeing to everything we did before, but doing the corrected one moving forward. Because I feel that it matches the intention behind the bigger idea of what was on the ballot. That being said, I'm not going to lose sleep if the rest of everyone else disagrees with me and we and we don't. Um, they ultimately don't think at the end of the day, it's that big of a of a difference in dollar signs, but um, Councilmember Schaefer, go ahead and then Isaacson.
Yeah, I I have a slightly different thought on the approach to this, uh. I, you know, if the uh ballot measure was unclear for any reason back then. I don't believe it's in with this within this council's purview, nor does this council have the expertise to make that decision. Uh, we have at least two, you know, two views from two different council members already. Uh, as to what was uh, you know, clearly or not clearly represented back then. Uh, therefore, to me, that's why we're in the bridge, I don't think that even enters into our decision-making or should it, and it's for a decision-making. Uh, the uh, you know, the fact that we do know is that that ballot measure passed, the voters did pass it already. Uh, I don't think we should go back and ask them again if they want to pass the same ballot measure in in the, you know, chance that it was unclear at the time. I think we uh move ahead, execute on what the voters already passed and that would be the corrected uh corrected amount.
Councilmember Isaacson?
I. I guess I gotta bait that position in general, that I think no one really understands what's going here and what we're asking to do is. Increase taxes on people in a way that is confusing for me, it's been confusing me from the beginning and I don't, I still don't understand, all I'm hearing is we're. We're raising the corrected levy and it's gonna just continue to go up and we're gonna do one percent every year. Because the law says we can, and I was here as a citizen before and asked the question and was basically told we can do it because we can. And I just think this is a wrong way to be taxed on our citizens and we're, I just asked, we're in the red. And we're not, we're in the black overall, so. Why are we asking, why are we going to try to approve an increase in a levy? Because we may have to levy a five percent in the future if we don't need it now and it's still confusing everybody. As a really, who's, how much taxes should have been raised, you got a dollar value in an email. You had a misinterpretation of the ballot, you got the website or something, I just don't want it, I don't feel good about morally to raise taxes on our citizens. When it's not clear to me what we're really doing.
If it's a direct response to that, yeah.
Yeah, I I didn't want to, I wanted to, like, until John is trying to. To to your point, sort of get your head around this, I I start from a point of clarification, there's really sort of two different things you're talking, there's the special. Levy which was targeted John toward I T uh investments, the school resource officer. And the um ball field improvement, so that was sort of the special levy lift that went to the voters that they approved. There's also sort of the property tax increase and what what Director Mason's showing here is sort of combining the both of them, so. That's I, I just wanted to ask if that's kind of where the confusion was coming in, because. There's a levy lift every year, sort of, and so that was the point and then on top of that was this special. Levy targeted toward these investments that the voters were asked to pass. Um, but the other piece, the one percent, that sort of can happen independent of that, of the the special levy, so I just.
The special, the, right, yeah.
I was like, wait, yes, we, uh, Councilmember Lovett?
Yeah, I'm a little confused too, to be honest, so I think, um, two questions, is the uncorrected two thousand and twenty-three number? The number that the people saw that voted on for the schools, ballpark, et cetera, was it the uncorrected number? That's my first question, so that would be question one. And then question two is, it's not a matter of whether or not we, I mean, we have to raise it every year, we're required to do that just based on Washington law. But this is separate from that, which I think was maybe just answered, but just clarifying that, we're really just talking about this special levy lid. That was voted on by the vote, by the, by, you know, went to vote and was. Voted for the uncorrected amount, is that, is that, am I thinking that right or is it the other way around?
It's the other way around, it's correct, they voted to pass what we now term as the corrected amount.
Yeah, so there there was a, there was a, hopefully, I I don't think I'm explaining it very well, but.
I mean, the language corrected and uncorrected is what's confusing me, because you would think that like. Corrected would be an affirmation of something and uncorrected would be something that was not seen or resolved.
Yeah, this amount right here, this twenty-one eight four three five zero, this is the amount that King County says. Is our prior year levy lid, our limit factor, this is the amount that we base our one percent on. So they are saying we can levy this amount plus one percent plus this new construction. The city, the reason why we have this corrected amount was because of of King County said, oh. When we did your levy lid, we, we, we uh calculated it incorrectly. So you're really, this is really where you should be, but um. There are opinions that we should not take that additional money because possibly the voters were. Thought that this would be the amount over here.
So they came in, they, so they just to clarify the like, the language, so they came in low. They came back and said, hey, it's actually more, but the voters saw the uncorrected amount because. That was prior to this King County assessment correction, so the voters saw the twenty-one twenty-three seventy. And the, and when you say we could take more, you're saying essentially we could tax more based on the King County. Number, but that's not, but and what Councilmember Naplin was is saying is that there is some question there. Around that may not be what the voters understand based on what was presented to them, correct?
I I believe you've you've, yep, I believe you said.
So then, so then my last, sorry, last thing, then my just, I feel like there should be no. Misrepresentation to the voters unless they see a new number.
Okay, city administrator McNam and then our city attorney as well, you have something to say, right, okay. Um, so I want to be clear, the the voters have not seen either of these numbers. We are years ahead of when this levy passed. So the voters did not see these numbers on the ballot. This, at this point, is a function of years of. The assessor's office not calculating the tax burden correctly and now they are correcting the amount. Years after the ballot, the voters haven't seen any of these calculations and it wasn't in the budget, in the ballot material.
Mr. Ken, did you want to?
Yeah, okay, so I've got two things and I'm gonna, I'm trying to figure out a way to say this really clearly, because I don't want to confuse things. So what you're asked to consider and approve tonight is all of what you're talking about. It is the increase for the year. Director Mason has created a spreadsheet that assumes based on your prior conversations. That the maximum one percent that you can increase in just a normal year will occur based on your prior conversation. That means that the secondary thing that is baked into it is whether or not to take the corrected amount. Or the uncorrected amount to then apply that one percent to. So you do have two questions, one of them has, I think, largely been resolved based on prior conversations. But what you're gonna prove tonight is not corrected or uncorrected, it's all of it together into your yearly increase. And it's just how that's being calculated. So I just wanted to make sure that it's the bigger picture that you're voting on, you're just talking about one component of it. The one percent is baked into what Director Mason has presented to you, assuming that you're moving forward with that.
And and it's also really important that we must take this vote tonight, because we have to report it to the county by November thirtieth.
And then just one other quick point, um, uh, Councilmember, you 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 asked me um about the. And then just one other quick point, um, uh, council member, you, you asked me, um, about the, uh, ordinance. So the, um, the ballot title, which is what was in on the ballot for voting, was, uh, drafted and approved by the city attorney at the time. And, um, was in the ordinance and was approved by council. And then went on the ballot and was voted by the public. So all of that has a consistent stream from the city attorney to council to the public to be approved. That doesn't change the things that you read. So just that string, there was consistency elsewhere, there may not have been, or there wasn't.
So we're gonna go council member Lovett really quick, and then, um, council member Napland.
So there's your option, which was very clear, thank you. And then the alternate option, I'm assuming is that we do the, we don't do the increase and then we bank it. That would be option two.
For, for the one percent, yes, for the one percent, we would, we wouldn't do the increase and we would bank it for future capacity.
But that, that isn't the balance.
There, there's two.
So there's no option, so in other words, there's no option. We just increase taxes no matter what, there's no option to say no. I'm just, I'm just curious if like, that's, I mean, that, that's, it's already been decided that we're doing it. That's what I'm clear on.
But the last council meeting, it was, it was indicated that the one, we would move forth with the one percent. But we needed to talk about whether we wanted to go with the corrected version, which is about sixty-two thousand dollars more, or the uncorrected version.
Council member Napland and then Isaacson.
Okay, I just wanna make a clarification. The language in the, uh, resolution that the council passed to put this on the ballot includes a phrase that says, this was what was supposed to be put on the ballot. It says, um, it talks, it, it specified that, and it said, in press, averaging approximately three hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars a year. So they were intending that the ballot measure would specify that this will average three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars a year. That was removed and not what was put on the ballot. So what council approved to put on the ballot is not what was put on the ballot. They removed all reference to the dollar amount on the ballot. Secondly, the section that described it in, you know, there's, there's multiple sections in the rev- resolution. There's a section that describes the levy that contradicts the language of the ballot measure. So even in the same exact resolution that council passed, it contradicts itself. Look, right here, three hundred and sixteen thousand, not what was on the ballot. Well, that's fine, well, then maybe they should have come back to council and said, you know what? We explained this incorrectly because that is not correct. Council was under the impression that it was a flat amount, and it would stay, it was like a bond. You know, a bond stays at a certain amount, and as you have more taxpayers pay in, each person pays a little less, and there's more taxpayers. So anyway, I just, I apologize, I'm not trying to put you on, but I knew that it wasn't the thing. But I, it's not.
Council member Isaacson?
So I still need a point of clarity. If y'all vote at the last council meeting that I was not here at to levy to one percent, is it approved? Or was it delayed to be all rolled in approved by?
I can answer that. Yeah, so last meeting, there are two issues are presented with regard to property tax. Whether or not to levy the additional one percent generally, and what to do with this, um, special levy. So the one percent, we did not vote, it was not approved. It was discussed and as a way for, uh, finance director, uh, Mason to move forward on presenting the rest of the budget. We baked in the one percent with the recommendation that we move forward in that manner. It has not been approved. And so there are still to this date, two things that must be approved or not approved tonight. Whether to addition, uh, levy the additional one percent and whether to levy it on a corrected or uncorrected.
Okay, so with that clarity, I've been part of discussion several times. From the beginning, every time I've said I vote against the one percent, I will vote against it again tonight. And I will vote against the corrected version as well. Because I still, all the confusion on what the voters really interpret, what we think they interpret, and what King County combines, the way you could have taken this much. How that could be perceived by the public, I think is we should take a higher road and say, sorry, yeah, we could have done this, but we didn't. And we keep being told by finance director, we are not in the red, we're not projected to be in the red. But why are we saying let's do a one percent levy out of fear in the future we may need it? And then we had to have the flat shit, and why are we going to a corrected higher tax pool? Just because King County said, oh, sorry, we calculated it wrong? When it's not the numbers that seems like, whether it's right or not, what it seems like the public possibly interpreted. I just think I will vote against it, I can't. Now that I understand, I think I clarified the two. Sorry, Director Mason, the last week when I wasn't here, the perception was we would approve the one percent. But I don't know if I'll be the one that changes that, but I'm not voting for it.
Well, it wasn't whether or not it would be approved, it was how should we move forward with the budget presentation? Um, but certainly we need to vote on vote tonight.
Um, and we're voting on them together. Granted, someone could make an amendment potentially.
It's, it's one vote, but it really does, it, I have never seen this happen because I've never been in a situation where you had to, you could vote yes and yes and yes and no. So we probably do need to vote them separately for it to be clear.
If that helps, I'm, I'm gonna go council member Supple because he hasn't really talked yet, and then I'll go to you.
Well, yeah, so I don't recall any discussion about whether we were going to vote on a one percent or some other percentage on property tax. I don't really recall that coming into discussion.
Yeah.
And either that they're in motion, it doesn't say anything about adopting one percent for tonight. If this is adopting ordinance to fix the amount of the annual add-in property tax. There's nothing in the motion that's been recommended by staff to adopt a one percent or some, some other value.
I'm reading it in the summary. I don't know if it actually needs to be in the motion to be part of it, to be agenda built.
Yeah, the ordinance that you're passing has to have by law, a percentage and a dollar figure that you're increasing the taxes. Excuse me. It has that, the, the dollar figure and the percentage in there takes into account all of these other, the, uh, that, um, new construction and all the changes and everything like that. And so that's why I, I don't, I don't think we can do two separate votes. You can procedurally move towards one, so, so sure, you could kind of do that. But you need to pass this ordinance tonight with a percentage and a dollar figure, no matter what you choose. If it's zero percent, zero dollars, and you bank everything, bank the one percent, that's fine. You can pass the ordinance with that noted in it. Or you can pass it with the one percent on the corrected amount, which is the largest amount you can do. You can do anything in between those two spectrums, but y'all need to do something.
Yeah, we need to pass one ordinance.
Something, yeah, one ordinance, which it's, it's the ordinance that's in the packet. You might have some revisions on what those numbers are, but it's between zero dollars, zero percent, and one percent and the cor- on the corrected value, which is what I believe Director Mason. Correct, which is lesser now, that's what I did, two cents.
The city attorney, um, does it make sense to take a vote on whether to do the corrected or uncorrected first? So we get that dollar set, and then whether or not to take the one percent on that amount? But so I'm thinking of kind of order of decision so we can get one ordinance passed or not passed? Or can you not, because it's all written in one.
Um, well, what I, yeah, what I don't want you to do is, uh, vote on something and then have it be done, um. Well, I mean, there really are kind of distinct questions. Uh, Director Mason, did you, sorry, you have your hand raised, do you?
I just wanted to clarify that, 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 you know, we do have fund balance in the general fund to use. But, but our revenues are less than our expenditures. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that.
So what I have, I, I know council member Schaefer and then, uh, council member Lovett, I see your hands up. But just really quick, I wanted to say what might help us organize. I feel like we've all given our base opinions so far, so maybe to help bring us to a point, you know, if you feel comfortable going around saying, you know, what you are comfortable. I'm trying to figure out, like, if we're gonna need to make an amendment, or, you know, or someone could just make a motion and we can work on it and figure it out. Because maybe there's enough that just want it how it is. So I just wanted to throw that out there to try and organize our thoughts and try to come to a decision point. So council member Schaefer and then Lovett, and then I think I saw Isaacson standing.
I was gonna second your thought, Amy, is that, that we, before we take a vote, go around the room and see if it makes any sense to even take a vote. Uh, then see what each person supports, what doesn't support, or is still confused.
Um, council member Lovett? You're muted.
Hand not mute, um. Quick question, um, Director Mason, uh, for the banking, does that mean that we're like essentially adding it up? Like, if you don't do one this year, then you gotta do two next year. And if you don't do two next year, you gotta do three next year, and you just keep, or is it like, we just went one and we can choose to do one next year and none this year? Oh, you're muted now.
You didn't.
Contagious.
I know, sorry. So we're banking it. So what happens is next year, instead of one percent, we could do two point oh one percent. Cause it's, it, 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 uh, compounds. And then the next year, we could do three point, I don't know what it would be, three point three percent.
Do, or could you just do?
You don't have to, but there might be, because our revenue in the general fund is, right now, we're getting a lot of, um, new construction, so our property taxes is, is growing, like, we, we had, had more new property tax from new construction this year than I think ever. But, um, but some years, that, when that stops happening and our expenses keep on going up, we might hit the taxpayers with a bigger bill. It would be, you know, five percent or, so we, the city could do that if they wanted to. Or you could do the incremental one percent every year, and then it just keeps compounding that way. So it's, yeah.
Or you could skip a year and just start going one percent, and you might still be okay, just, you might.
Yeah, then you would have that two percent, so it would, it would keep that, I think it would still compound every year. But you could add it another year if you wanted to, yes.
Councilor.
But it is.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm done.
Okay. I think that's echoed throughout the room, uh, council member Isaacson.
Yeah, so I see, helping me to say this out loud, and maybe it'll help everyone else. I think what we have to the ability to levy the one percent only corrected, we have the ability to levy the one percent only uncorrected. Kind of what we got in the bill. You can't do just the one percent by itself, right? You gotta have the correct or uncorrected, one of those two. Um, so, and my, my point on letting everyone know I will vote against it is, we were talking about revenue, I get it, revenue is going down, but we can see that problem coming. And we can, we need to work on that as a city, not say, well, we don't have revenue, so we need to raise taxes. And I'm glad you asked that question, councilor, um, it's, it's one percent, we could go, we could look at two percent next year. And yeah, that sucks, but you know, saying, let me, give me your money right now because I can. Well, why don't we work on the other things that gives the city money instead of the one in our system, so give me more tax because I can't. We don't need it right now, and you're saying we, revenues are going down. That's our job to make sure we don't go into debt in the city, but there's other places to get money. Um, so that's my pitch, and my, I wanna say it out loud, so if I'm wrong in my thought process, I want someone to please tell me. But I just don't understand why we levy taxes just because we can't, right now, we're not, not a trace.
And we've hit nine thirty, so we, we need a motion to continue, we do.
So move.
Second, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes, we will continue on. So with that, I wanna go back to my thought was to see where we're at, um, you know, like, um, our city attorney said, you've got the percentage, you've got the corrected, uncorrected, you know. Where are we at? I mean, do we just wanna go around the table and see, is anyone wanting to propose an amendment? I mean, we could make a motion and just get it going and do it that way too. We don't have to go around the table, somebody could just make a motion, someone could move to amend if they don't like it. Or we could just vote yes or no, it's up to you all, but we need to decide tonight.
I, I'm not gonna do a motion, I just wanted to add one more thing, and then I'll just to clarify. Cause I think now there's, the conversations evolved from where I thought it initially was, where we settled the one percent and we were discussing. This, it's now kind of inverted. Um, you know, I, I, I fully understand the sensitivity around taxes, but I also understand, um, council member Napland's point of view from how things were presented. I think the thing that I shrivel with in the same way, we're, we're looking at this from different ways. It, I don't know how many people read the marketing material, but I know everyone who wrote it on this read, read the, um, the actual, um, well, maybe, maybe they didn't, but, but they at least, you know, had the opportunity to read it before they filled it out. And that language is very, it is different from the ordinance that, that Jennifer showed me, it's, it's different from the marketing material. But at the end of the day, this was what the vote was taken on. I do think, you know, if we decide not to, to take the corrected, that is sort of the last bite of the apple. And we're just going forward, it's a flat, and, and this levy is, is not ending this year, it's the additional year. So, so it, it means that we're making a decision to leave money that the, the, you know, the residents specifically targeted for a certain, uh, community investments that we're not taking advantage of that. Now, I, I think the other piece is more discretionary in terms of if we do the one percent or not, or some portion of that. But, but on this piece in particular, again, I think this, we, we, I wouldn't want to revisit this conversation. Sort of next year, we're, we're essentially rebasing it. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure from a council perspective, folks are aware of this. But again, the language doesn't mention three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. It does talk about it in the increase every year, it does reference the rate of increase, so, um. But I, again, I understand the point of view of someone read something else and interpreted, but, but the language itself is pretty targeted. So with that, I'm, I would be, you know, we're doing a straw poll. I'm still in favor of using the corrected amount.
And what about the ones?
Uh, I, I guess that's another sort of conversation back to Director Mason, because I, I'm not sure that it's always, you know, do we end up with a surplus or a deficit? I think there's a lot of unknowns where inflationary period, that place both ways. From a residential perspective, it's more quicker in terms of what they're gonna pay. But the expenditure and cost of that department level, all the city investments, they're all still going up. So, um, you know, again, that's just the other piece of it. I, I, I think I am. Um, I would defer, that's one I probably will, you know, I again, won't lose sleep if, if the council goes a different direction. Uh, I'm just a little concerned when there is some of that. We don't know what things will cost three months from now. I would also ask, I guess, one follow-up question for Director Mason. In terms of the preliminary budget numbers that you've shared, um, those are obviously part of the pie is the tax revenue or the property tax rates. Does that take into account the one percent?
It does.
Okay, you could always get adjustments going into tonight's meeting or that tables. I also wanted to make sure that that was out there is the, the budget then is, there is less revenue that, so that would adjust even the numbers that we, we saw earlier today, John.
Yeah, I would just say that, you know, I've not, I, I haven't always voted yes on the one percent. I did vote no last year because, or the last time we did, because, you know, we're coming out of COVID. And I thought, well, if there was ever a year to just not do it, that was it for me. Um, but I do also tend to like to just go a little more gradual. I, I get the argument though, and I, yeah, I, you know, I get what you're saying. So I just wanna say I understand that, um, I'm okay with the one percent like we talked about last time. And again, I'm okay with the corrected amount going forward, but it wouldn't lose sleep. I mean, very similar to what council member Mercer said, so, um, council member Supple.
Well, I, I prefer with you, I think, you know, the one percent is, is, um, good insurance against future, um, inflation. We don't know what far off is gonna bring. Uh, hate to come back and, uh, six months from now and say, hey, we don't have enough money to cover expenditures because we shorted, we thought we'd save, uh, the community, uh, twenty dollars a year or thirty dollars a year on their taxes or whatever. This is kind of short sighted to me. We haven't done any risk analysis yet about what the impact is of going with less than one percent. We've seen the analysis when we, when we adjust taxes for one percent, but we haven't seen anything for finance that we deferred that one percent to zero, to point five percent. If we deferred that one percent to zero, point five percent, that's, to me, it's just too much of a risk. And I, I concur with you, the, the corrected, um, the corrected value of that.
Uh, council member Schaefer.
Yeah, for reasons that, you know, many of us just expressed, I also think we should, uh, uh, ask the one percent. Uh, as well, I don't wanna slam our taxpayers to some point in the future with the two, three, or even more percent increase in property taxes. When we find out to like that we, we really needed that. Uh, and for reasons I already said, because the voters did pass this, I think it is our duty to carry forward with the corrected amount. It was passed by the voters.
Do we have anyone who wants to?
I didn't, I didn't go longer.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, I had resigned myself to being, uh, okay with the one percent. You know, I, I do think we have a lot of differences. I don't also mind banking it if that was the decision because an awful lot of cities bank their, their money. And, you know, trying to say that it's, you know, less painful for the taxpayers. You know, let's say you deferred it for five years and you did zero increase, zero increase, zero increase, and then you banked it and you did the five percent in one year. That's still less painful dollar wise than the gradual. The gradual means you have in total paid significantly over. The not painful is only not painful in the sense of a frog in a pan and you slowly turn on the water, they're not gonna notice and jump out. So that's the only lack of pain. You aren't aware that you're being pain because it happens so gradually. So the whole concept that, you know, we're, we're sparing pain, in, in the end, doing the one percent every year is much more painful dollar wise than not doing it for five years and then doing the five percent. I'll move on from that. I just wanted to point that out, but, um, I, I can't in great conscience. Um, I feel like government needs to hold themselves to a higher standard to describe, um, what voters are voting on. Clearly, the voters look to us. We have documentation. It's not just word of mouth. It's not just one email. It's marketing materials. It's emails. It's the description within the resolution that council passed. And somehow it got translated onto the ballot measure different than even council could approve. Like, there's so much confusion here and it's clearly not what the council thought they were voting on. Nor what any community member who had gotten flyers in the mail, I remember. I mean, all of these things were presented. I can guarantee you that most people read those and made their decision because they were bombarded with them in their utility bill, the flyer is explaining it. So by the time they saw it on the ballot, they were like, yeah, I'm voting for it. It's only this much. And maybe didn't even need it. So the bottom line is in good conscience, I cannot approve it. I just, I feel like government needs to hold themselves to a higher standard. And in this case, government fell short in understanding what they were putting before the voters and they described it incorrectly.
All right, I think, oh, go ahead. I wonder if it makes sense to take a vote on one percent and corrected. Find out if that passes or fails. And then if it fails, take a different vote and go from there.
So, so take a vote, what you're proposing Cynthia is take a vote on the whole debate, so to speak.
Yes.
One percent plus the corrective amount.
Yeah, it's written, I mean, so my point was everyone's kind of gone around a few times. I think we're done with this. And so if anyone's ready to make a motion, we can try. If you wanna motion to amend after the first motion, uh, go for that and, and we'll go from there. Uh, council member Schaefer, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm going to approve maybe point two ninety six.
Oh, it's actually, yeah, good catch.
It's one, one oh three.
One oh three.
Which would include both the one percent and the corrective levy.
Sorry, second.
My second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Um, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no.
No.
No. Or did you get it?
Who?
You got it. Uh, and that's simple. Okay, there's some sugar. Uh, okay, so with that, the ayes have it and the motion passes. Thanks for the good discussion, everybody. Um, with that, we'll move on to AB twenty two dash one oh four, resolution, Riverview School District, School Impact fee. Uh, with director or deputy city administrator, Thomas.
Uh, good evening, mayor, pro tem and council members. I'm gonna share my screen. Um, that was a good discussion. Just so you know, I am in Texas, so I'm gonna try and stay, um, productive. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so this is really just an update. There's no decision requested this evening. Let's see if I can change my screen. Okay, there we go. Sorry about that. Uh, so the, the city and the district entered into an ILA and this was in about nineteen ninety nine. I did include it in this updated packet, so hopefully you enjoyed that, um, that reading. Um, concern was brought up at our last meeting related to the CIP cost assumptions and how they were determined for future projects. Um, we did have some email correspond, correspondence between the council member and the district. We included that in your packet, so you could get a frame of reference for that. We are currently working on setting up a meeting with the district, which is really a conversational meeting. But one thing that I think I really wanted to share and I talked with Cynthia, um, on this and also our city attorney. Um, a great time to engage the district is in the spring when they are going through their capital facility planning process before they hold their hearings and adopt their official CIP. Um, at the next meeting, we do need to start getting towards making a decision. We do have obviously through the end of the year, but I think we'd like to do it at the first meeting in December if possible. Um, the district does rely on us to make our decisions in a fairly timely way. But I did want to share that we are working on setting up a meeting. I'm hoping that we get that meeting next week so that we can come back and report, um, back to council and then make a final decision on that particular piece of legislation on the school impact fee. Um, those were the only small updates I had. Does council have any questions?
Council member Schaefer.
Not, not really. Well, a sort of question, uh, let's see, uh, Director B. From this meeting, we hope to have some additional information from the school. Is that correct?
I think we were actually hoping that we would have a meeting before this meeting, but we really only have, you know, about ten days between meetings to, to get meetings set up. And we have been in communication, actually during this meeting, I sent them a follow up request for a meeting. Um, I'm gonna try and help coordinate that at this point and we're looking at hopefully early next week. I gave them some available times that our administrator was available.
Great, okay. Well, thank you. I'm just, I was just trying to rationalize why we're gonna wait till somebody, you just answered that, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Questions? Okay. Thank you for that. Sounds good. We'll see that again soon.
Thank you, consult.
So our first item on new business is AB twenty two dash one oh five. Do all police officers twenty twenty three to twenty twenty five contract with deputy city administrator, Thomas, again.
Did we miss that item for unfinished business, the one we took off the consent?
Uh, that one goes under new business.
Oh, new business. Okay, thank you.
Okay, again, uh, good evening, Laura Thomas. I'm gonna share my screen again. So as council knows, we have been working since late summer on updating this, uh, the, the CBA for beginning in January of twenty twenty three. Our current CBA expires at the end of this year. We've had, um, really, a really good process, honestly, with our guild and then also with our attorney. And then, um, with Steve Suborn, who was also at the table. Um, I wanted to just give a couple of highlights. Both the, um, edited version and the clean version are in your packet, so hopefully you enjoyed both versions. Um, a couple of the highlights is that we're looking at a nine, four and four percent increase over the next three years. So that would be for the COLA. Um, longevity is increasing over the four bands by, um, at two percent, four percent, six percent and eight percent. It was one, two, three, and I believe four previously. Uh, for two years of service vacation, we are going from ninety six hours to a hundred and four hours. Education pay will increase by COLA yearly. The SRO dare is a year round percentage increase from five percent to seven percent. Field training pay will increase by COLA. Uh, the PIO incentive has been removed. Um, we have increased, um, Juneteenth as a new holiday. We were able to eliminate, uh, the VIBA. Uh, non economic list of items included RCW Language and Labor Management Committee. Those, um, are the basic highlights, so I will stop sharing. If there are any questions, now would be an opportunity.
Any questions?
Yes.
I quit.
It, it seemed like the nine percent COLA for the first year seems, what was that based on?
That was based on our contract negotiations and we came to a tentative agreement between the police union and the city.
Was that based on some, um, cost of living index or something or?
City administrator, whatever you're responding to.
Yeah, so Lauren, my understanding is that it was based on the comps of jurisdictions that are similar in both population and size of police department. So usually in police contracts, you look at the comps of similarly sized departments, similarly sized jurisdictions, pop, uh, population and assessed valuation. And you figure out what your kind of like comps are paying relative to the market. Is that the case that happened in this bargain?
Yes, that is the case. We saw comps that were higher and not much lower. And so I think we felt like we did a pretty good job with the nine, four and four because there were some cities that, that were higher. We were also able to negotiate a couple of items out of the contract that costs the city money as well.
So is that a comp? Is that could raise our police salary in line with what other?
Yeah, so, so we, so for police contracts work a little bit differently than our traditional union contracts. Um, we, uh, are, we work to be market rate. And so we have, I believe about eleven, it's either nine or eleven comparable cities that we utilize. And then there's an analysis done that's a spreadsheet of kind of where we lie within, you know, within that framework. And so we did that work over the summer and went through this with council and with our union over the last couple of months.
Council member Schaefer.
Just, just for the newer council members here, I think it might be good to understand and, and actually might be good for me to understand. The, uh, the, the contract with the police union, uh, includes all of our, uh, officers. It does not include the chief, does not include the lieutenant, uh, sergeant. This is sergeant which is included in, in or?
No, the sergeant, this is only the officers.
Just, just, just our police officers. Okay.
Correct.
I think that's good for us as ca- council members to understand. It's, it's, uh, a, you know, majority, but a subset.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Uh, council member Napland?
Yeah, I just have a statement to make. I, I think this contract was putting us in a really difficult spot going into the future for affordability of our police force. And, you know, I, I think it was stated, we're an interest arbitration type state with this type of, you know, police contract. And, you know, I, I just worry about the future of, um, you know, small cities like us trying to have independent police forces, um, the constant one upping of this city have this much, that city and everyone trying to stay a little bit above because they wanna compete. I mean, it's, it's really spiraling out of control. So I felt like I had no choice, but here we are. And I think this is gonna be painful.
Anyone else? Um, this was on, um, the agenda for discussion, but it seemed like, as I mentioned, you need a decision soon, correct? At the deadline I saw on the, this by December twentieth, but I'm assuming you need this decision sooner.
Um, as long as we have it by the end of the year, we are good. This is the first touch of the actual contract at council. So we can put it on the next, you know, the next council meeting.
Okay.
So what, what's gonna change between now and, um, I, 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 I'm, I'm trying to understand why, why do we wanna delay something? Nothing's gonna change.
Sometimes it gives the more opportunity for the public to read our packets. If they're interested, they could always show and give public comment. So, you know, if it's, if we, if we're good on time, if anyone wants to make a motion at any time, feel free, we could also say we wanna put it on the next consent agenda. We could bring it up at the next meeting. And sometimes it's just time management in our meetings that can save time to utilize consent or to just pass things through if we're all good with it. So it's really up to the council.
But, uh, we don't expect anything on the agenda bill itself to change.
No, at this point, we have a tentative agreement with the union and there is no opportunity at this point absent a lack of ratification by council to change anything in that agreement.
Okay, so I, I, I don't see why we shouldn't go on it tonight. This is my, my point. Why delay it when nothing's going, going to change? Even public comment really won't change, but.
Are you making a motion?
Was noted on the agenda as discussion. So members of the public may not have thought that there would be action tonight. So I'd encourage you to be noted as.
That was something we've discussed before, and I think that's good clarification to have going forward. Would council be okay putting this on the next consent agenda? If we're allowed to do that, right? Sign up sometimes can, um, is head nods are fine if you're good with this on the next, yeah, so it can go on the next consent. Okay.
Thank you.
Get on to the next one then. Thank you for that. Um, so almost our last, so, cause we did have one item that we pulled off consent. So our next item is AB twenty two dash one oh six, interlocal agreement with city of Redmond for mental health services with Chief Dubak.
Good evening, council, air pro tem, community and city staff. Um, I'm Chief Dubak Dubak Police. I'll be presenting agenda bill one two twenty two dash one oh six with, which is an ILA with Redmond Police Department for Mental Health Services. Uh, as I said earlier this evening, I'm excited to bring this to you for consideration because it's been a year long. It's the training of these services in place. Um, so basically what the, uh, MHP service is, is a corresponding model to where a mental health professional will come out and, uh, partner with one of our officers and respond to calls that involve behavioral health issues. Uh, mental illness, social security deficits and other situations that are necessary, the aid and de-escalation of these, uh, types of crisis calls. And then they can provide additional resources, uh, referrals afterwards. Um, the purpose of this correspondent program is to give police to be access to my health pressure, who can connect people experiencing the crisis to services and resources reducing need for police and other resources. Um, the inside the package shows the budget, uh, impacts in there. We also are required to provide them with a laptop for the services and an office workspace, which I'm in the process of getting ready to be right out. So, um, are there any questions?
Council member Napland and then Schaefer.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand a little bit of how this works. So is it four hours designated, like a certain day, certain time, that it would be assigned to you all?
That's all gotta be discussed between us and their, uh, whoever's running their program over there, but they're basically giving us, um, what is the math? It's like. They're giving us two hundred and eight hours annually and breaking that down into four hours per week for this service. So we just gonna work with them. My perception would be like two days, two hours at a time. We're typically experiencing anywhere between five to seven, um, these types of events per month. So let's just try to find, find out what would be the best counterpoint of this personnel here. And then we can also use them for referral services as well. So if we do have an incident, let's say they're out here every Tuesday. Um, we have an incident a week anywhere around when Tuesday gets here, they can do a. Um, we have an incident, a weekend or whatever, when Tuesday gets here, they can do a follow-up with those people, make sure they get the resources and help that they need, and do another additional follow-up or which would, which we're currently doing, the working fire departments, just like take on that type of thing. It also involves training. They're gonna be providing, during downtime, they'll be providing officers with training, and they're gonna do annual C I T referral or fresh return for our officers um every year as well.
I guess my, I I think this is a great idea. I'm just trying to understand logistically. It seems like crises don't happen on schedule.
Right.
And then really gonna be needed is
They're they're not nice. Yeah, and that follows well with us. That's why we provide them with laptops. So let's say they're, I'm working over in Redmond and it's uh Wednesday and they're not here on a Wednesday for, you know, if that's not part of their schedule, then we can use that laptop that we're providing them, so they can do like FaceTiming with the individual in crisis and kind of go over what, you know, what's happening, referrals, and try to do an assessment that way as well.
Is that only during their working hours that we can?
Well.
Or I'm just trying to understand. There's just a lot of logistics that um, you know, to really be successful and respond in an emergency. I'm just trying to understand what access do we have to this person? I mean, because during the daytime, you know, the chances of four hours, which is like maybe one percent of the time coverage coinciding with an event is.
Redmond is working, and I don't know exactly what's going on with their, you know, resolutions over there, but I don't know. They're working ambition, getting additional mental health professional staff over there. So we will have more people on that staff, and they are available to us after hours on
Okay.
With phones, obviously, we'll have to pay the which is also in here as well, so they will be available outside those hours as well.
Okay, and then I had a question and I, it was about travel time and you answered it, but I didn't really see it addressed in the I L A, and I just think we need to be super clear in our agreements of whether travel time is included because the Redmond is releasing them for four hours. They don't magically get here to work there for hours. You see what I mean? So if they release them for four hours and it takes a half an hour at least to get here, depending on the time of day, and a half an hour back, like you really aren't getting, like I think it should be spelled out in the contract. I feel like we have been burned on contracts. I L A has got a good relationship. We think everyone understands it. We're on the same page. And then you go back and you're like, wow, we're not on the same page and it's not spelled out. So that would be my only request. I know it's a discussion, but I just really wanna make it successful and get the most out of our investment. And so I just wanna make sure we aren't, you know, shortchanging ourselves or surprised by something in the future because it's not clear who pays travel time. Where that is.
Um, City of Mission?
Can I make a um a request for clarification? Is the request to go back and negotiate travel time or the lack thereof into the contract prior to having a decision on the contract as well?
I guess what I'm saying, is it clear in the contract to you um, whether the four hours would include the travel time? Is it clear? When, when speaking, and I haven't seen that there was attorney review on this. And so I wasn't sure if attorney would be.
It does say they will work four hours per week in Dubal. It doesn't say, it doesn't say.
That they're only released from Redmond for, I I don't know. Anyway.
And that that that's how I read it too, was in Dubal.
And I talked in my discussions with the chief over there, he said that is onsite, so that.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I was part of that, that, that's how I read it as well. And I think, and I I was looking at something else, I don't have it open, but the uh language that you that you recall, the release, I think is, there's a Dubal section and a Redmond section. I think there are ones in each section, if I remember correctly. Um, so they're not linked together. Um, and so if the conversation with the chief is in Dubal, and that's how it's written, that's how I would expect it as well. We could certainly go back, not to drag this out, go back to add that as a another clause to that sentence.
If you legally think it's clear and feel satisfied and can defend it, then it's on them.
I mean, yeah, it says in Dubal.
Okay.
Councilmember Schiefer?
Yeah, well, first, I'd like to thank the chief and others for all the hard work we put into this. I know this was kind of on top of mind for the chief for a very long period of time. He uh, he and others feel very strongly about the need for this mental health professional, so uh so it looks like it's finally coming to fruition, so the chief is very happy about that. Uh, I think we all will be happy about that. Uh, let's see, I I do wanna just emphasize how important this is. Uh, it's obvious, it's pretty much obvious what, you know, how important this is to the public, to the people that we serve, uh, to the people that may need this type of uh of service. And a mental professional can likely do things that a police officer uh isn't trained or is not. Uh, and uh, uh, you know, and that, you know, those people are gonna be better off because of that. I also wanna emphasize how important it is to be police officers, our police officers uh to they know they don't have the expertise to deal with a lot of uh the mental health uh issues that they run into today. And in a way, you know, we're kind of like, you know, they're kind of, you know, putting themselves in a little bit of a bind, you know, how do I really help this person? You know, this is not an area of expertise for our police officers. Would this help uh our police officers themselves will be in a much better uh position? And I know the officers strong will support the, you know, the need for, you know, for this type of professional services as well. So anyway, I'm excited for many reasons about this.
I I actually, it was a clarifying question as well when I read it. It wasn't as much around, you know, I think in the block it talks about the two hundred and eight hours which you mentioned, and then in sort of the summers that you talked about. Four-hour weekends if you do do math and sort of write out. I was curious if there's flexibility, if you found that you needed, I don't know, to do, uh, you wanted to do a workshop for the officer to provide them with some additional skills in terms of onsite negotiation or or things, de-escalation. And you determined you needed eight hours, but it's still within that two hundred, like if if that's a hard four hours or um, if that was the four hours as as allocated of the hours, could it would be nice to have some flexibility? Obviously, there's a certain portion of crisis management in terms of real time, but I think there's an opportunity. I'm just being realistic, two hours twice a day. By the time you get, you know, butts in seats and and folks settled and you talk about the agenda, there's not a lot of information transfer. You know, there could be opportunities where you want six hours or, so I again, it's, I don't wanna in any way um sort of revisit the contract, but I'm curious in terms of how much of that preface section is sort of baked into the contract language versus framing. I think the two hundred and eight language is clearly fine, but in terms of, it would be nice to have a little bit of this regular in terms of how that's allocated within, you know, negotiating when the two departments, because I do think there's an opportunity for building skills in the department that would offer some of what you talked about in terms of the uh not always being able to respond or available in your time and and provide this officer with some additional development.
Inside their uh, the the like their services that they provide, does they that they would provide a annual training to officers on a mutual new time and place on.
During that, so there is
Yeah, during that conversation with the chief over there, when we're figuring out what day time that's gonna be, we can discuss, you know, we can, maybe we can do a four-hour training session that, you know, takes up two months, but then if that following month we need, or the takes up the entire month. And then we need additional time, we can always pay that all the time.
Councilmember Alexander?
So I think maybe yes, same, so you have to use a four-hour week, or if you have no prices, this week, no prices, you have no prices for a month. And then you and the other department decided, I worry about sending this person over here this month, so I've got four hours, the sixteen hour, that you did the bank, you moved it, and you get towards the end of the year, we got we got all of it left, and all the way you come sitting by, so you've all been a whole.
I I, because it's new, I have to see how this is gonna work. I don't even know if four hours is is gonna be enough for us. Yeah, so I I would have to wait and see how the first few months go and then maybe this. I don't know.
Follow that way, because that's the way to approach it, not okay, we're not, we'll just burn two hours and be in the mission, whether it's right. Maybe we'll next week, according to the show, and you're for two hours.
Yeah, I definitely wanna get the best bank for a buck.
Yeah, I would just say, so I, and I had sent all this to to the Public Safety Committee because I was so excited about it. I went in June to the A W C conference, um, and my favorite session by far was the one on mental health professionals and first responders. And I had sent all that info out to the committee because I was just so excited, because I knew you you'd been working on that. Um, and the neatest thing about the session were all the speakers, and one duo was a mental health professional and the officer she was paired with. And there's a lot of talk about, you know, the mental health professionals training officers, but it also goes the other way too because officers have very special training. And she had mentioned that she learned, you know, certain situations, no, you can't just go run in there and talk to this person right at the moment. Like, let's let things calm down. You know, she started to better learn different kinds of dangers that the officers are better trained to recognize. Um, and it was just really fun to hear them talk about their experiences together and what they learned, and it was just so productive. And I think that, you know, we're seeing more communities implement this type of thing than not, you know, and and I'm just so excited that we're going here. Um, and yeah, it's gonna be a learning. We don't know how much we're gonna use it, like how do you schedule it with all these little things? Um, and I I imagine it's much like you guys have really slow times where you didn't have any calls. So surely there are other things you do, um, and that'll get worked out, but yeah, there's probably gonna be some time that it takes. So I'm just excited because I think it's gonna be a super beneficial relationship and it's gonna really improve service to our community. Great. And, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Schiefer.
Uh, yeah, I just wanna, again, you know, have the council think about how much, you know, detail they wanna get into here. In my mind, it's really up to the chief uh and the police department inside, you know, what hours are best. Uh, working with the constraints of whatever, you know, whatever, you know, we end up uh working with 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 the city of Redmond. I don't think it's really within the council's uh uh realm to delve too deeply in into that. Uh, I certainly trust the chief and the others to uh, you know, to do that, uh, do that work. So with that, I'm wondering, is there any reason, again, we should vote on this tonight?
I saw the recommendation was to review and provide feedback and at a future meeting approve and authorize. Is it even ready to be voted on right now?
Yeah, I apologize, the agenda bill was created back
Okay.
Month in.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure because sometimes staff brings it forward to get a touch, to get feedback, but they're not ready yet for a vote. So if it is ready, or
I think because we had moved it off of
Yeah.
a prior calendar. Um, it got bumped here and it has the whole language, but yeah, I think we're ready for a decision.
Yeah, so if anyone wants to make a motion, I feel
Any public comment?
Oh.
It's a new business.
Public comment on?
You guys not any public comment?
Not on each individual item. We do, yeah, we just had the public comment session at the beginning.
Councilmember Knoplin? I just wanna make sure. I don't think anyone here was trying to tell the chief how to schedule the cooking. I think that the question was, does the contract allow flexibility? Because we actually do trust that you are capable of, you know, coordinating the right balance. And so we just wanna make sure that, that's I also, I wanna make sure there's flexibility in there. And um, so if you feel confident that you're under, I I mean, it's four hours a week, but I'm, you know, that that really just is dividing the number by fifty-two weeks. And really, you can
My my conversations with the chief, I mean, he's so I I think that if we, if we're seeing that we're not needing them during certain times, I'm sure we could get some
Right.
Just gonna be have another conversation with him, but
Yeah.
He's a reasonable guy, so I see why.
Yeah, I'm excited to hear it, so.
I'll, I'll, I'd like to clarify a few, you know, I'm not trying to laugh at that either. If there's more of a question, a curiosity, do you already know that? And then we would know that, and we hope everyone understands. I'm not lying at all, or if you were telling me, you think I was trying to laugh with that. I'm serious and curious.
Um, and a reminder, this is Agenda Bill one oh six that was corrected if anyone is gonna make a motion.
I mean, we we vote or pass Agenda Bill A B twenty-two dash one oh six. Uh, I L A, the Mental Health Services from the City of Redmond.
Second. Um, forgot for a second, I gotta call up there. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Please pay no. Motion passes. Okay, with that, we're on to our last item, which was originally on consent. It's A B twenty-two, just to help you find it in your packet, if you need to click on that. So A B twenty-two dash one oh one, P D T I remodel construction contract. I'm guessing that's with Director Anna Shaksin. Okay, do you want, so rather than you presenting anything, we could just start with the questions since it's late. So go ahead, Councilmember Knoplin.
Yeah, it's really quickly, I mean, it's substantially more than First question, did something change? Did the book change? Like, what happened? And then the second question, is there the management reserve? And I guess legally, I'm curious, what's the difference between a management reserve and a contingency? I mean, I think of contingency as like unforeseen, we opened the wall, and the sewer was a disaster, we had to rebuild it, you know, an emergency, we had to get it done. When I hear management reserve, in the back of my mind, I'm like, hmm, does that mean, ooh, it'd be really nice to do this while we're at it? They're already here, we kind of brainstormed it, let's do it. So which one is it, I guess?
Uh, good evening. Council will send him back, people that just need to work. First question on cost, the table that was provided on February nine had some greens, which we were gonna do. Those were all within the actual, very very close percentages. The only one we had missing was number twenty, which is why we hired York Day. So that's the difference in the ethnic versus the actual receipt. So that's the forty-some thousand model. No, it's the actual, everything we had speced out, flooring, windows, ventilation, patrol room. Uh, roof and exterior, all that work listed. The only one that was not listed was because of the locker room, actual recreation of the holding cell. Uh, and then part of the office space for the holding cell area, and that was the number we had no idea on. That was the difference. And then on the management reserve, so we tend to apply management reserve because in the design and then the bid, there's more contingency. So when we open a wall and we have a plan, I said, we're gonna put this back, if something doesn't fit or needs adjustment or has to be altered, that's where we use that, if we have to negotiate that. That's what's for, it's not for the, if you get something that's not Yeah, and and even in the eleventh hour, right, we had realized when we were making a female locker room, the now men's locker room, that washer and dryer. We're not gonna then add the female locker room, take their stuff into the men's locker room, and then they're washing her. So we put a plumbing hat in, so we'll have a stack of a washer and dryer. Little things like that are unforeseen. We tried to see everything. We're also dealing with a modular building, so, right, it's let's hope it all works out, yes.
Any others? Any other questions? Or someone wanna make a motion?
We had five bids, we're excited.
Is there a second?
Second, sure.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. Hand of no further business. This meeting is adjourned at ten fourteen.
Can someone turn the recording off?
Or she talked to somebody else.
I'm asking somebody to turn.